Welcome to everybody who's tuning in. This is the February 1st, 2021 Committee of the Whole. It's Councillor Sarah Duncan in the chair tonight. I have Councillor Scott Garnett here with me, and Mayor McNeil Smith, and Councillors Terry O'Keefe, Peter Wainwright, Chad Rintul, and Barbara Fallett calling in. It is 6:00 PM, so I'll call the meeting to order and start with the territorial acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we are on the traditional territories of the Wasanich people. May we learn to live in a good way with all of our relatives here. And moving along, I will look for an approval of the agenda for tonight. Got a mover? We're, oh.
There you go.
Sorry, I muted my colleagues. I think we're okay now. There you go. Scott Garnett is moved.
So moved. Second.
And seconded. Call the question. Can you hear me? All right. All in favor? We'll move on to approval of the minutes from the last regular Committee of the Whole meeting from January 18th.
All move the minutes be approved?
Second.
Call the question. All in favor? All right. Unanimous, and we'll move along. We have no presentations tonight, except for that from our Administration and Finance. We will now receive a presentation on the draft 2021-2025 financial plan from our Director of Corporate Services, Mr. Andrew Hissick. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's that time of year again where we get to have our first look at the 2021-25 financial plan. It's an unusual presentation this year with only three of you here and very few of my colleagues in the room, but just it is a team effort. I should acknowledge that right off the bat. I'm the one who's standing here, but there's 10 or 12 people who had a big hand in this financial plan. And it's all seven council members that will help to bring it through to its conclusion. So you'll have to forgive me if some of this is a bit repetitive. It's not new to any of you anymore, but it might be new to some of the people watching at home. So if I do repeat myself a little bit, please forgive me, and I'll try and move through as quickly as I can. So this is part of what we have to do every year, which is adopt a five-year financial plan as per their community charter. And until the next one is adopted, the previous five-year plan is in effect. And this financial plan will establish the budget upon which our upcoming tax rates are set. We generally have a three-part budgeting process, starting with introduction on the first night, which is tonight. So this will be a presentation of what's included in the budget, overview of the main points, and introduction to the budget package that will be available to you within two days. After tonight, we'll reconvene in two weeks plus a day after Family Day for a second crack at the budget, but in effect, it'll be council's first real chance to ask questions, clarify aspects of the budget, and it'll be the first opportunity for public input and in-depth discussion. At that report, there will be an additional staff report covering many of the more complicated aspects of the budget. A lot of what I'm telling you tonight will also be highlighted in that staff report on the 16th. No need to take detailed notes today. After that initial consideration, two weeks later, we'll have a special council meeting on the Tuesday night, following a normal council night, to deliberate on the budget, hopefully one final time. If, however, we don't finish the budget that time, additional meetings will be called at the call of the chair, whether it be the following night or some other time to be determined. But we've only required an extra meeting once in my 14 years here, so I'm banking on us getting it right. Last year was a bit unusual, and we had to reopen the budget following adoption because of COVID, and we did a good job of that. Tonight's goal is to introduce the draft financial plan to council and the public, provide an overview of the major impacts, to outline the major capital projects and supplemental items included in the budget, and to add a bit of context to your review of the materials. This is an incredibly unique budget year, not like anything we've ever seen before. Last year, after we adopted the original budget with a relatively modest tax increase, COVID hit, and we had to rethink everything. So in 2020, we cut our revenues by a considerable margin, but we left the services intact. So we made up for the lost revenues by borrowing from our own surplus, and we cut the revenues and our budgets to help residents and businesses cope with the impacts of COVID-19. So having done that cut, we must eventually bring our tax revenues back up to the traditional level. And in addition to that, we also have to account for new impacts that have hit us or will hit us since the budget was adopted last year. There's way too many buttons in front of me here, unfortunately. So last year, after we made our cuts, several months later, we learned that there was a Canada BC program that was enacted to provide relief to local governments, and we received a fairly substantial Canada BC Safe Restart Grant, which helped to replenish our surplus. It also made it easier for us to maintain the 10% tax reduction for businesses as our starting point for 2021. So that BC Safe Restart Grant will also help to bridge the gap between commercial and residential tax rates. So when council decided to keep the taxation revenues at the same level as 2020, we acknowledged there would be another hit of $550,000, which we would make up through the Safe Restart Grants. Safe Restart Funds will also help to transition back to a sustainable revenue level. However, it's important that we avoid making that task more difficult by keeping our taxes artificially low. The more we defer increases, the larger they'll have to be down the road. So once we run out of Safe Restart Grants, it's going to be down to us raising tax revenues or reducing our service levels, which nobody wants. Again, wrong button. Okay, with that little interlude, I'll take you to the slide you really want to hear about, is what's the projected tax increase going into the budget? Well, our draft financial plan starts off with a tax increase of 4.45%. Included in that amount are several new budget items that have not yet been approved by council. So it's all built in. If you don't approve it, it comes out and will reduce the tax impact. So throughout the rest of this evening, we'll cover what's included in the above projected increase, and we'll identify some areas to focus on and some decisions to be made over the upcoming budget process. So with that brief intro, I'll also provide our traditional glossary of major components of budgeting, and this is for the benefit of the public. So our budget's broken into water, sewer, and general funds. Each one is independently funded, water and sewer through parcel taxes and user fees, and the general fund through taxation. So each one of those three funds has operating and capital components, and the key features of each will be highlighted tonight. We'll also talk about capital budgets, and what capital means is, for us, the renewal of existing infrastructure, or adding additional capital assets to the town's inventory. It can be new items or projects, and we like to present it in terms of ongoing programs, new items, or items carried forward. Not all of our capital is funded from taxes. In fact, very little of it is, most of it is funded from reserves, and all the funding sources will be identified. Supplemental requests are part of our operating budget, and what these are are changes to the existing service, whether they be newer additional services. Often, these are one-time studies or minor operating impacts, but they can also be major ongoing items, such as the firefighter hiring plan that we brought in over the last seven or eight years, which is now fully implemented. Sometimes supplemental requests come from external sources, such as a community organization looking for more support. Other times, they're internal. We bring it forward based on organizational need or council request. There tend to be a number of these every year, and what we'll highlight is the change in total costs versus last year's requests. And the most significant of these items will be backed up in the staff report. We'll talk about service levels and what that means. So the base budget is developed to maintain existing levels of service to taxpayers, so what people are used to. So if it's a certain level of staffing to respond to the public, or a certain level of maintenance of our downtown or our parks, we adjust our budget accordingly each year to make sure we can provide that level that's expected. So staff use our collective experience, along with the latest external information, to determine the cost of delivering council-approved service levels. We don't budget for the worst case every year, only for the most likely case, based on our past experience. And all the departmental budgets are developed on that basis. We look at the bottom line for each function. We don't spend a lot of time looking at individual line items, which are only our best guess at the mix of labor, contract, and materials required to provide to get the job done for the year. And we don't always look for an increase. We look for efficiencies first wherever possible. We'll talk about reserves, which are amounts that we're allowed to set aside by bylaw for specific purposes. So once we establish these by bylaw, the reserve funds can only be used for the intended purpose. So we have, most of our reserves are for asset replacement, whether it be roads, drainage, water, or sewer infrastructure, also for vehicle replacement, computer equipment, and for the ferry terminal. We have some less defined reserves, such as the general and water capital reserves, which are for essentially any capital purpose within those funds. And we have some smaller reserves, like the land sale or amenities, which are primarily collected through development. We often grapple about what is the required balance for each of the reserves, and what should we set aside for each? Well, the answer is that depends on our plans and our funding strategies. Some of the appropriate levels are really easy to establish, like for vehicles and computer equipment. We know what we have. We have a general idea of what it'll cost to replace that, so it's just a simple division, and we set aside those funds each year. Others require more investigation, and it's an iterative process that's always changing, like our infrastructure. What does it cost to replace it? And that's a moving target. And we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that later as we discuss capital. Also, reserve balances will be cyclical. Some years, we'll put more money in. Others, other years, we'll use more than we put in. It's all really based on our financial planning model. We have limited reserves for replacing buildings, and also for some waterfront infrastructure, like the Beacon Wharf. So for buildings, typically, we've tended to borrow when we had to replace one of our major structures, like the fire hall, and the RCMP building about 20 years ago now. We have nothing to replace the town hall should we decide to go down that road. So we do have some decisions to make going forward. A brief word about borrowing or debt in the municipal context. It's important to note that any debt held by the town is for the purposes of capital construction only, and it bears no relation to the type of debt that you associate with senior governments. So senior governments incur deficits that result in debt that has to be paid back over a number of years, and that's just to pay for their annual operations. We can't do that. We could only incur debt for capital. And we have very specific rules around borrowing and specific limits around how much we can borrow. The town has a relatively low level of debt even after the CSB, and more can be incurred if required, subject to a public process. Certainly not encouraging more debt, but I'm certainly not discouraging it either should the need for it arise. There's nothing in the current plan that calls for it, but as we look towards major replacements of buildings or Beacon Wharf down the road, we might have to think about a bit more borrowing, which would be paid back over time by the public that benefits from that service down the road. We can borrow for up to five years in short-term borrowing, and we can access $50 per resident, so up to about $600,000 a cent free for short-term purposes. And we'll have a bit of that this year to pay for some fire department equipment. So I spoke earlier about budget development. Where do we get new budget items? Sometimes it's council requests. Sometimes it's community requests. Often, it's the best judgment of trained, experienced staff to maintain what we have, to make a purchase that'll reduce ongoing operating costs, or to add new features or amenities that we think have been requested or are required. Some requests in the budget are nice-to-have items, or what I would like to call nice-to-have, but that's all relative. What we think is nice-to-have is crucial to the person requesting it. And still worth bringing nice-to-haves forward as a potential improvement in a community amenity. One example that we'll have this year is picnic tables at the Rose Garden, which is in part a COVID measure to allow for outside gathering, but also as a long-term amenity going forward, as another gathering place. And it's important to note that staff do not bring forward frivolous budget items. We talk about the water utility, and that's self-funded, as mentioned earlier. Essentially, that includes, for the most part, the bulk water purchase from the CRD, and then the operation and maintenance of a distribution system only. We don't do water treatment ourselves. We also maintain our infrastructure, renew it when required, and do some minor capital projects. Now, the water utility was recently the subject of a report to council following a rate structure review, and at that time, council went with staff's recommendation to change the rate structure and set new rates for water for the upcoming year. So water is funded through the infrastructure levy or parcel tax, which is going to see a $10 increase for 2021, and that charge is collected on the tax notice. There's also a fixed charge of $20 per quarter, which is on the utility bill, as well as a consumption charge, which has now been reduced to $5.37 per 1,000 gallons. So council did approve that rate structure, as well as the rates. And while that approval was given pre-budget, it'll be important to bring that through this process and just get council approval of the water and sewer operating and capital budgets as a whole. And perhaps that's something that could be done at the next budget meeting, if council's comfortable with that. So the new rate structure, what that accomplishes is provide sufficient revenues to ensure the financial sustainability of the water utility. We're running into deficits over the last number of years, as the increases were deferred until we finished our review. The new structure is also going to produce stable revenues that match our cost structure. It'll be a better matching of fees paid to the benefits received. Moving on to the sewer utility, the largest share there is the town's share of operating the Unified Treatment Plant, as well as the operation and maintenance of the collection system, and, once again, renewing our infrastructure. Like water, it's funded outside of the taxation process. It's with the sewer parcel tax and user fees. The parcel tax remains at $65 a year for strata, or $130 a year for single-family residents. We are proposing a slight increase to the user fee, unfortunately. We're proposing a 50 cent per 1,000 gallons increase, taking it to $7.90, which is back to the rate we had in 2014. Now, the main reason for the increase in the sewer utility is the Heartland Residuals Treatment Facility, which is for the disposal of biosolids. That's a fairly significant hit to us, but it's not a town program. It's a cost passed down to us through the regional and subregional service. However, the Sanich Peninsula Wastewater Committee continues to explore alternatives for handling the residuals. Unfortunately, I don't think it'll help us this year, and hence the need for the slight increase to the user rate. Now, following completion of the water rate structure review, we will be moving on to sewer. We hope to complete that this year. Moving on to the General Operating Fund. The General Operating Fund provides for all municipal functions, except for sewer and water. We have a number of program areas that you're familiar with, and we'll go through the impacts for each one of those later on. Now, the most significant impacts overall to general operating are, the draft budget includes an additional $93,000 in tax-funded capital items. Reserve contributions are increasing by $80,000, which is roughly average per year, and that's to gradually increase the amounts we're setting aside to try and keep up with costs. There's an additional $236,000 in supplemental requests, and that's a net increase over last year. There is a slight offset to that that I'll mention later, but that's where we stand going in. Debt servicing goes up by $75,000, mostly for that short-term borrowing I mentioned for the fire equipment, but also for the, last year was the year we took our, the last of our borrowing for the CSB. 2021, however, is the first year that we have full debt payments on that, so there is a slight increase. The RCMP contract is going up by roughly $72,000 over last year. And finally, fire personnel are increasing by roughly $50,000 this year. It's actually a lot more than that, but we have some offsetting revenues we carried forward from last year.
Excuse me, Andrew, but I think your slide presentation is lagging behind where you're talking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So in the core operating budget to general operating, once again, we didn't have across-the-board inflationary increases. We only increased in the areas where required to maintain the existing services, like utilities or contractual obligations. We did have some additional revenue through growth in the tax base, and that's always the first offset before we apply the general increase. Now, we're only looking at an additional $140,000 for this year. I was expecting it to be more, and the projection for the next four years is a little higher. So we do see a lot of construction around us, and eventually, that will translate to a growth in our tax base, which will pick up part of the increases annually. Going through our operating budget, function by function, legislative services and general government, there's a net increase of about $63,000 over last year, on a total budget of about $2.04 million. Now, the vast majority of that is supplemental items, and most of it is made up of one very specific item. There are, in fact, three new positions included in the budget for 2021. One of them is to do with our Computer Services Department. Some of you might recall that back around 2013-14, we reduced our total complement of computer service staff by one, by moving to a model where we shared one position 50/50 with the RCMP. And that was due to the fact that, at that time, RCMP was centralizing their support services. Well, gradually since that time, unfortunately, it's gone back the other way, where the demands on the RCMP staff support position are ever-increasing, and they need their own dedicated position once again. What that means is that we'll be, once again, going back to the staffing level that we had back in 2013-14, if this is approved. It really isn't practical to just take that existing position and allocate it all to the RCMP, because even over the last two years with the shared position, as the impacts have led to more and more work for the RCMP, the town computer network has been suffering. We're just doing enough to keep up. We're not doing enough to get ahead, to move our technology ahead to where it needs to be, and it's just impractical to try and do that with one last staff position or even a half-position. It's very difficult to try and hire a part-time position to fill out our complement. Moving on to the RCMP, net increase is $120,000 from last year, with $72,000 of that being the contract, and the remainder being the other half of the IT position I just mentioned. There's also a small addition for auxiliary administrative support. Whether it's COVID or other reasons, the detachment has fallen behind on their administrative work, and they simply need more hands-on deck to keep up. We'll see if things abate after COVID, and they've had a chance to catch up, but for the time being, we're hoping to fill that gap through auxiliary staffing only, rather than bringing on another full-time position. Even with the increases, the RCMP is still less costly than a municipal police force. The next aspect of protective services is fire and emergency. There's a net increase of over $57,000 since last year, and it's largely due to personnel. So in 2020, our small complement of career staff made the decision to unionize, and we've been negotiating their first contract since that time. Now, that will have an impact on salaries, but in addition to that, it's an opportunity where we have to also enhance the volunteer recognition, as these volunteers will be working alongside the career members, who are now unionized, and also to keep up with some of our neighboring departments. It's a tight-knit community of volunteers regionally, and if one department gets additional volunteer recognition, it's not too long before it catches up to you, and that's what we're having to face over the next two years. We are proposing a two-year phase-in on that. In addition, there's an additional item for duty officer compensation. We haven't changed the rate at which we compensate duty officers for a number of years now, and it's time to do that once again. Now, these three items, there was a vacancy in Now, these three items, there was a vacancy in the fire department in 2020, along with some other savings, and we've carried forward a hundred thousand of those to help offset the increases in 2021. I mean, that's great for this year, but what that means is that from 2022 onwards, when we no longer have those savings, it will be a bigger impact going forward. Building inspection and bylaw enforcement, we have a net decrease from last year of twenty-seven thousand. So, there's an eighteen-thousand-dollar increase for parking enforcement, which is more than offset by an increase in building permit revenues. Last year was a record year, and a big chunk of those revenues were deferred to this year. So, we're off to a good start already, and we should have another good year. We don't think it'll be quite what we had in 2020, but if it is, it'll help, once again, with the 2022 cost impact. Development services is a net increase of only one thousand dollars, and that despite an additional thirty-six thousand for the final phase of the OCP review. Engineering and Works, there's a net increase of ninety-five thousand dollars, which is the largest they've seen in years. Last year, they saw a decrease, and that's on a net budget of two million dollars. After keeping our snow clearing budget stable for the last fifteen, twenty years, I think it's time now to increase it slightly. And that's based on, you know, it's becoming more of a regular occurrence that we're seeing overages on that very modest budget. In addition, we have more vehicle maintenance, as well as some additional overhead time that's not charged out to other functions. Now, some of that is COVID-related, as our safety officer, for example, has to undertake some additional safety checks throughout the summer months, and we anticipate that happening again. Environmental Services, a net increase of over a hundred-and-sixteen thousand, and that's through two supplemental items. The largest one of those is for the Climate Action Coordinator, which is a two-year term position that we introduced last year. The position's already been advertised, and it will close next month. And staff's direction of strategic planning was to try and fill that position in the first quarter, and if we receive final approval through the budget, then we will hire that And the latest impact on the budget was approved just last week, which is a fifty-thousand-dollar energy rebate account to supplement the provincial program, and that was recently approved by council, but I'm marking it as a supplemental item because it's a new service. Parks and Cultural Services, it's a net increase of forty-two thousand over last year, on a net budget of over one-point-six million. The biggest impact is the junior arborist position that we've mentioned to council several times before, but that'll be offset by 2020 savings related to events and celebrations. So, we obviously didn't have many of our annual community events, so we took that unused funding from last year and brought it forward to help fund this year's budget. Fiscal Services is another big part of our budget, and there's a net increase of close to two-hundred thousand from last year. We've talked about debt servicing of seventy-five thousand. We've talked about reserve transfers. The final piece is community support, and the biggest part of that is reinstating the full Economic Development Fund budget to the hundred-thousand-dollar starting point. That can be reduced by council once again, but our traditional starting point is a hundred thousand, and we'll go from there. And a little further in the presentation, I'll show you where we stand with respect A month's worth of talking in one night. Thank you. The supplemental or supplementary items are one-time or ongoing additions to the existing service levels, and, as mentioned before, all of these are built into the draft tax increase. So, if any are not approved, and they're, in fact, tax-funded, then it'll bring back the... bring down the impact. So, a brief description of all these items is in the budget materials, but the staff report for the next meeting will have even more details on the major items. The biggest items are thirty-six thousand dollars in new funding for the OCP review. You'll recall that it was a phased project, and the 2021 portion was originally set at another hundred thousand, which we have added, but we've brought forward various funding sources to reduce the tax impact. So, it's not the OCP review budget that's been reduced, it's just the amount of taxes we're allocating to it. For instance, fifty thousand of last year's extra building permit revenues were used to reduce the impact, as well as fourteen thousand in general savings and planning. The Climate Action Coordinator, seventy-six thousand, as mentioned. Energy Rebate Program, the separate IT position for RCMP. Junior Arborist, twenty-six thousand eight hundred in arts programs, made up of two components that we'll cover. Sixteen thousand eight hundred is for arts-y, and a draft amount of ten thousand has been included for voluntary contribution to CRD Arts, and I know that some members of council might want to review that amount. Other smaller items, total fifty-two thousand, for a total 2021 impact of three-hundred-and-sixty, but when we deduct the one-time items from last year, it brings the net impact down to We talked about the Economic Development Fund. We start at a hundred thousand in annual funding. The commitments we've already approved are twenty-eight thousand to the BIA for the event liaison, ten thousand more for the event supplement, two thousand in miscellaneous commitments to the... from the EDC. And finally, SIP, they're up for a five-year renewal, and that is something that'll specifically have to be addressed by council, but I'm showing it here as being within the existing hundred thousand dollars of ED fund, as opposed to a supplemental item, because, in effect, it is funded if you choose to fund it from the ED budget. Nevertheless, there will be a resolution required to approve that for a five-year term. It's important to note that this table does not include the 2021 ED requests that will be funded from the SAFE Restart Grant. So, you'll recall that, and you'll see this in your binders, that there was a sixty-thousand-dollar request from the BIA that they spoke to at the last meeting, and that's over a three-year period. The draft budget shows that being entirely funded from the SAFE Restart Grant. And there's also a sixty-thousand-dollar budget for an ED strategy, which came up through recovery efforts, as well as the EDC. That also is proposed to be funded from the SAFE Restart Grant. We talk very often about what it costs to run the municipality, but a little focus on what we get. So, this nice bit of color just shows how we break down our tax-funded expenditures. You'll see the biggest chunks go to police protection, public works, fire and emergency and general government, recreation and culture, another big chunk, as well as over ten percent to transfers to reserves. Community support has grown over the years and makes up sixty-six and a half percent of our budget. Debt servicing is only three and a half percent. Moving on to capital, our total capital expenditure budget for this year is nine-point-six million, which includes six million in replacement plan projects, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand in recurring programs like street lighting, underground wiring, and small equipment, one-point-eight million projects that were carried forward from last year, mostly the West Side Bike Path, the washrooms, as well as the Bevan Pier. I should note that there will be a few more projects carried forward after the year-end is completed, maybe half a dozen or so. They're not included here because we didn't have a good idea of the amount of funding to be carried forward to 2021 until the final costs come in for last year. There's also about one-and-a-half million dollars in new projects, and please refer to the document for a full listing. The biggest projects are the Eighth Street Sidewalk and the Talista Park Sidewalk. Only a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand of that, however, is tax-funded. So, how is that nine-point-six million dollars funded? Well, the vast majority comes from our reserves, with seven-point-two million of funding. Next is federal gas tax funds, which is another one million dollars. Two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand in short-term debt for this year. Roughly half a million in funds carried forward from last year. Taxes and user fees are three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. North Sanich is paying roughly a hundred-and-sixty for cost-sharing capital items, and about ninety-nine thousand in other funding, including provincial cost-sharing for RCMP capital. So, the level of property tax funding for 2021 is going in at two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, which was roughly ninety-three thousand more than last year, but it's still quite a bit lower than it used to be ten, twelve years ago. Going back to 2009, for example, the average annual funding in that financial plan was half a million. So, our new normal seems to be in the range of two-hundred to three-hundred thousand a year, and what's made that possible is more reliance on reserves, as well as the gas tax, which has helped to end our reliance on tax funding. Significant projects for this year, or for the next five years, I should say, we've got thirteen-point-four million over the next five years in infrastructure replacement, and that's a little bit more than we can afford, and I'll get into that later. Other asset replacement plans, one-point-three million this year, some at the ferry terminal. We've got vehicles, including one very expensive sewer vehicle, as well as computer equipment. We've got Bevan Pier, major maintenance on that, six-hundred thousand over two years, and there will be a staff report coming forward on that over the next month or two. We've got the public washroom projects, both of which have a grant application pending, as well as the West Side Highway Bike Path. Again, a grant application for that was just put in last week. And finally, the Eighth Street Sidewalk is three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The capital program will be broken out by type, but perhaps the area where we'll have the most focus is on new capital projects, which total roughly one-point-five million. This table will be reproduced in your materials. This is just an illustration of... We've got maybe twelve, fifteen, what we call, new projects that probably will get the most attention, even though there's only a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand in tax funding allocated to these. It's not to say that other programs won't be reviewed, it's just we tend to focus more on the new stuff. A little more detail about infrastructure replacement. So, you'll recall that we did a pavement condition assessment a few years ago, and that plan is now taking a more active role in guiding our planning. So, we look at when the roads need to be replaced to keep them functional, and we work backwards from there in planning for the underground work. One thing that'll help us going forward is that we're no longer using the replacement reserve for new sidewalk and curb. These reserves were meant for replacement only. We're supposed to use other funding for additions to the sidewalk and curb network. So, thanks to the gas tax funds, we do have a source where we can pay for the new stuff without impacting taxes, and that'll help to stretch our reserve dollars. Now, on the non-beneficial side, I have to say that the recent storm modeling has identified the need for capacity upgrades due to climate change, and this will lead to large increases in future years, unless we can come up with some creative solutions to our upsizing the pipe problem. And there is a study to be undertaken in 2022 or '23 that will look at this before we commit too many funds to it. So, as mentioned earlier, our current infrastructure plan is unaffordable, starting as early as 2021. We've got more projects on the books than we have funding set aside for it. So, we won't be able to accommodate all 2021 projects unless we get one or both of the grants we've applied for, and what that would do is free up some additional funding from other sources that could then be applied to infrastructure. These projects are included in the budget anyway in case they do proceed, but if they don't, if we don't get that funding, then we can see a one-year deferral on the construction of our two bigger... two biggest capital projects. We'll undertake the design only this year, and perhaps tender it late in the year for 2022 construction. There will be more coming forward on this throughout the year as we hear about our grants, and hopefully, we'll be successful. It's been a while. But regardless of that, we must look at increasing our transfer to reserves in future. I'm not including anything but the regular annual increases at this time, but you could look to expect something as early as next year. Storm and sanitary sewer are the biggest areas of concern because of those capacity So, we've been relying more and more on gas tax over the last ten, twelve years now, and quite a number of projects in the current five-year plan are slated to be funded by gas tax, and you have a complete listing here. We're using one-point-one million in 2021, and fairly substantial amounts in other years as well, and this certainly helps the town in stretching our funding dollars. It makes projects possible that otherwise wouldn't have been. Now, the amenity reserve, this is funds taken through larger developments where they build more allowable developed area under our amenity policy, and we've collected quite a few... quite a few dollars the last few years in this, and allocated some of it to projects over the last two, three years, and that'll continue going forward. The biggest allocation for the next two years is for the public washrooms. Now, we're showing amenity funding for these. In case we don't get the grant, we'll still have the funding in place to potentially move ahead, although potentially to a scaled-back version of what we're hoping to build. A hundred-and-seven thousand five hundred is included for the Blue Heron Park turf fields, which is not technically our project, but something that council approved for the Peninsula Soccer Association and their own grant. So, if that grant is successful, the three municipalities have pledged some funding, and ours would come from the amenity reserve. We also had quite a lot built up in the land sale reserve due primarily to the old fire hall site, and while we used a large chunk of it for Ray Creek, we still have quite a bit left over, and the biggest pieces of it are slated for Eighth Street Sidewalk, as well as the Bike Path on the west side of Sydney. And that, again, is a potential grant project, where if we get the grant funding, then this money will be freed up for other projects. Well, now that I've taken you through operating and capital... Well, now that I've taken you through operating and capital, it comes down to the question of how do we fund the budget that isn't funded from reserves? So the first line of defense, if you will, is accumulated surplus. And the town is required to have an ongoing surplus from prior year's operations, and we have a policy for how much that should be. That doesn't mean we can't have a deficit in any given year, just means we have to maintain an accumulated surplus, and ours is, is within policy levels, thanks to replenishing it from safe restart funds. Now, our policy calls for a percentage of previous year's revenues, so we set a level of a minimum of 25% of last year's taxes for what our ongoing balance should be, and we are above that amount. And we use a certain amount of surplus each year to balance the budget each year, and that's as a first line of defense against overtaxing because we, there's an expectation that departments, if given sufficient funds, will carry out their mandate, but that some savings will occur. Normally, we budget for somewhere between 250 to 350 in surplus each year. This year, I've taken an additional 100,000, and that's primarily to pay for the Climate Action Coordinator, and I've done the same thing next year. So for, for the two-year term position, it's essentially funded from internal funds. It won't be a tax impact. So once surplus is applied, we're left with property taxation. Once all other funding sources have been considered, we're down to balancing our budget through taxes. So the tax increase is partially mitigated by new revenues through growth, and then a general tax increase is applied evenly across the board. So general changes in assessment are factored out when we set rates, and that keeps our revenues predictable. So even though we didn't see a large increase in, in assessed values for residential properties last year, there was a very minor one, and our tax rate will be reduced accordingly to offset that assessment increase. And then only the final tax increase approved by council will be applied to that reduced rate. And there are different rates paid by different classes of property, as you know, and as we get closer and closer to the tax rate setting, we might choose to go back into tax At this time, it's important to reiterate the importance of safe restart grants, which were a large one-time grant from the federal and provincial governments to assist with COVID-19 costs and recovery. This allowed the town to replenish our reserves that we used last year after we cut our tax revenues. It also allowed the town to carry business tax reductions forward for another year. Furthermore, it's going to allow us to gradually transition back to full tax revenues. So at this time, I would like to make it clear that we're not looking for outside ideas for how to use our tax funds, I mean, our safe restart funds. We have our own plans already. Our focus has been on reducing the tax impacts for residents and businesses. Remaining funds are earmarked for transitioning back to full revenues while accommodating ongoing impacts. Using our safe restart funds for other purposes will limit our ability to phase in this So this table I've provided shows you what my plan is for how to use the remaining safe restart grants. The amounts in white essentially are council-approved items. The amounts in red are items in the budget that have not yet been considered by council. So last year, we received 2.758 million and allocated 650,000 of it. Last year, we, council also made the decision to allocate 550,000 to keep our tax starting point at last year's level. Council also made the decision to waive business license fees, which is an $85,000 tax hit that'll be made up through safe restart grants. We've, our investment revenues have been severely impacted by COVID. We're anticipating a loss of 100,000 this year and next, and a smaller one in 2023. And I'm proposing that safe restart grants, we be, be used to make up that lost revenue and prevent a further impact on taxes. So other items in our draft budget that are tentatively funded by safe restart money are the ED strategy, SBIA's business development support, a safe restart grant program that I'll provide more details on, but this is a response to that external request that was considered last week by council from that farming program. So should council decide to set up our own grant program using safe restart funds, it would be carved off of the remaining budget. There's 20,000 in additional bylaw enforcement for 2021. We anticipate requiring some part-time support this year, and that, once again, will be funded from this source. Additional washroom cleaning again from safe restart funds. Council approved the first round of overnight fire staffing, and there's 20,000 carved off for that. And I believe there's a report coming forward soon for a little bit more for that purpose. So going into next year, as part of our phase-in back to regular revenue levels, I'm tentatively proposing to use 450,000 to help bring our revenues back to near-normal and gradually decreasing that amount into 2023. And the plan here is that by 2024, once all these funds are gone, that we should be back up to full taxation levels. So essentially, we've got three, maybe four years to get us there, but the more we defer, the bigger the hit will be down the road. Now, it's not to say that additional items can't come forward for safe restart grants, but the important thing is if you allocate it to another purpose not shown here, it's just going to carve away from the amounts that we have for 2022 and '23 to phase us back to regular revenue levels. So our increase in property taxes required this year is 662,000, and that's allocated as follows. 140,000 as taxes from new construction, leaving 522 as a general tax increase, which is roughly Taxes make up over 62% of our general operating revenues. It is by far our biggest funding source. This is the table that council, I think, likes to see in terms of breaking down our tax impacts. So if you look at changes to what I consider our core budget, which means what does it cost to provide community and council expected service levels? We've got over 400,000 in that alone, but that includes the increase in tax-funded capital. So the RCMP contract we've talked about before, that's outside of our ability to control, but it is a cost we have to incur. Supplemental items is another 236,000 net. However, I did mention there is that 100,000 in additional surplus that I allocated to Finally, the section at the bottom, which is our offsets, and this list is, is longer than usual. Normally, I, I only show the, the non-market revenue, the growth in the tax base. This year, I've also brought in the safe restart funds, and that's a fairly substantial amount if all the items are approved. And there is your additional 100,000 I talked about for the two-year term position, leaving 4.45% net. And each 1% increase in taxes gives us 117,300 in revenue to fund operations. So it's not a lot. And each 1% tax increase represents roughly $1.27 per month to the average residence. Taking a different look at it, the average residence is estimated to, to be at a value of 700,000 this year, slightly up from last. The impact on municipal taxes is roughly $5 per year, sorry, per month. There was that $10 increase in the water parcel tax that we approved as part of the rate review. That's also collected on the tax notice, so it's shown here. The total projected increase at the 4.45% tax increase level is $78 for the year, or roughly 650 a month for the average residence. So municipal taxes are roughly 132,000 a month, 149 if you include the parcel taxes, which still compares very favorably to the average utility bill or the average strata fee, and compare what you get for your tax dollars versus what you get for those services. Now, a five-year projection of what we're looking at in the draft financial plan shows year two is a bit problematic, and we definitely have some work to do there. So in each subsequent year, there is a tax-based growth to offset the increase, and I'm showing 150,000 per year going forward, although I think that's conservative. I think we will see more starting next year, as some of these larger developments are in a higher degree of completion. Now, that large bump there for 2022, part of that is the, the loss of carry-forward funding for items like the fire department. But there's also a little too much tax-funded capital there that will need to be whittled down as we prepare next year's budget. So while it looks a little bigger than I'd like, please note there will be work done at the staff level. If, if not now, then prior to next year's budget, for sure. Normally, we try and smooth it out a bit, but we just ran out of time and had to bring this to you this way. So we do have more work ahead of us. And the last two to three-year plans, two of the plan need, tend to be understated. Capital tends to be front-ended to some degree, as well as supplemental items, and we know we can expect a bit more down the road. Well, that roughly concludes the presentation. Just take you through what to expect at the next meeting. So on the 16th, I'm going to have a much shorter presentation just to kind of set the stage for what's to come and maybe remind everyone to some of the bigger challenges we're looking at. So there will be a detailed staff report on the major capital and supplemental items, as well as some of the, the newer messages I've tried to convey tonight about our infrastructure plans, as well as safe restart funding and my proposed plan to phase back taxes over a number of years. So the next meeting will be the first chance for council, council to ask questions, make recommendations on adding or removing items, et cetera. And it'll also be the taxpayer's first chance to, to comment on what is or is not included in the draft budget. Although we hear from them on an ongoing basis, this is a chance to see if we got it right. And it will be an interesting year with having to participate through Zoom, but we've been doing it long enough that I think we've got the process down pat. And the ads in the, the local paper, as well as on the town's website, have made it clear that anyone wishing to comment should inform the administration department by Monday of the meeting at the latest. It'll be Tuesday next time because of the holiday, but people can sign up to comment should they wish to do so, whether it be at the next meeting or the subsequent budget meeting on the, on March 2nd. The public will have the opportunity to come on, comment at the beginning of the meeting through public participation, but they'll also have a chance to make additional comments or ask questions following the second presentation. Staff reports will add more detail on the complex items. We'll focus on individual items that impact the tax increase the most, such as new capital projects, supplemental requests, and so on. And following that meeting, the results will be built into a second draft of the financial plan, which will be considered on March 2nd. If council has some ideas on what they would like to see in the staff report for the next meeting, please, by all means, send them my way. If these questions, however, come up on the 16th, we'll do our best to answer them on the spot, or if not, we'll follow up for the March 2nd meeting. Staff are available to answer questions between now and the next budget meeting, whether they be from council or staff, I mean, or the public, I mean. But with that, I'm wondering if there's any items that the chair would like clarified before I conclude tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hesek. I have no items to, to clarify tonight. Would you feel comfortable opening into the floor for items to clarify?
Absolutely.
All right, I'll take it out to my colleagues then, if you have items for clarification for tonight, before we receive our budget bieters to review later this week. Okay, I'm not sure who is raising it, with Councilor O'Keefe and then Councilor Rintul?
Thank you, Chair. My question is just about the, you talked about the surplus that you had, or the savings that there was in engineering because we didn't have any, many events. And so I'm wondering, is, was that saving from the events? Was that within the engineering budget? Or did that come from those, I know we've got those amounts that we pay to the SBIA for the event liaison and the supplement of about 38,000. So I was just trying to clarify where those funds came from, from engineering or from the SBIA?
They're from internal town budgets.
Okay. And I guess just to follow up to that, if I may. So on things like that, where we've, you know, we've allocated amounts to the SBIA and I believe to Peninsula Celebrations as well. And, you know, through no fault of their own, they weren't able to carry out those events so that they didn't incur those expenditures. So would we be looking to, to take that back or, or to reduce their amount for next year? Have we had any thoughts on that?
We have been in contact with Peninsula Celebrations, and they have agreed to not seek funding in 2021. So that, the budget has been reduced for that.
Okay.
SBIA did not, they had their hands full last year, and they used the funding at, in ways that were acceptable to the town, so no reduction there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Rintul?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to Mr. Hesek. Thank you for your presentation and for this background information. Much appreciated. I noticed, of course, a number of these project commitments that you have included town resources towards, you've indicated also have, in many cases, grant applications that relate to them. The Blue Heron Turf, as an example, which is a fairly costly implication to the budget overall. I don't anticipate you have the answer tonight, Mr. Hesek, but it would certainly be helpful, I think, for council to have an indication of, of the timelines for approvals on any of these grants, including the, the town grant applications, which may well give, you know, council pause for thought around how to address those capital projects. which may well give, you know, council pause for thought around how to address those capital projects.
Thank you, councillor. We, we will look into when we anticipate those decisions. But it's often difficult for senior governments to get through the, the programs on schedule because they're always oversubscribed. So while they have a target date, it isn't always met.
Did you have a follow-up for that, Councillor Rintoul, or was that what you're expecting? Okay. I may follow up on that then. What, what is the target date deadline for those grants that we had?
Sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head. The one for the West Side Highway Bike Path was just submitted. So the program just closed late last week. I anticipate it'll take several months to hear about it. But it is a fast-track project. That, that whole program is geared towards projects that are supposed to be completed this year. So we hope to hear by spring on that one. I'm sure Ms. Clary knows the answer, and she'll provide it next meeting. I'm told that the washroom grant is supposed to be announced very soon.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Much appreciated. The, the only question I have is, is just on the, on the topic of capital projects. And you indicated capital projects budgeted in excess of $9 million. And I believe the number was about 168,000 as tax-funded. I, I'm, I'm sure you've told us in previous years, but if you could remind us the distinction between how staff determine a capital project to be, to be tax-funded versus reserve-funded, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's dependent on the nature of the project. A lot of the, as you saw in our capital highlights, the bulk of our projects are infrastructure replacement, which has its own reserve. So that is a clear-cut answer for how they're funded. Beyond that, I do my best every year to take advantage of existing internal funds to fund any project that comes forward before I put it down to tax funding. So while there is an amount of 200 to 300 that we expect as tax funding for capital, anything else I can find another funding source for is just thrown into the tax bucket. And if it's approved, then that's where it's funded from. If not, then it doesn't happen. Basically, tax funding is meant for new stuff. And until recently, when we had other sources like gas tax or amenity or land sale, all the new stuff was tax-funded. Now we have more sources, and I'm taking advantage wherever I can. But there is a limit. You can only spend that once.
Thank you. Follow-up question on, on, sorry, I've lost my thought on, on the capital project. But with regard to, oh, sorry, I recall now. Sorry, we, we had an excellent report from yourself, from finance last year on the many reserve funds that, that we have here at the town. We had some discussion about the, the intention of how those different reserve funds would be used. While I certainly appreciate, I think council appreciates the work staff has done when it's preparing the budgets to look at what the appropriate reserve fund is to, to fund different projects. And tonight, you spoke, for example, of the amenity fund or one of the other funds. I think it would be helpful to council to, to have as one of the reports or one of the, one of the information documents at the next meeting, just a reminder of what those several reserve funds are and what the balances might be, you know, to the end of, of the last fiscal year, if that's, if that's available. Just so that I think council and the public has an appreciation of, of how well we've done in terms of putting money in reserve funds, but kind of the thinking that goes behind, or staff's thinking behind the use of those funds when they're, when it's, when the presentation is made for us, but when we're giving it consideration. The, the last question I have, Madam Chair, through you, Madam Chairs, is, is with regards to the gas tax. And I think I saw a figure just over $1 million this year in gas tax funds. That seems to me much higher than previous years. Can you provide perhaps just the status of, of the gas fund, gas tax fund levels?
We receive roughly just under 600,000, five to six of the last few years. Excuse me. There was one double payment in 2019 or '20, I believe. They just front-ended one of the payments. So, well, 1 million is larger than normal. It is within our allocated balance. And I'll, I will bring forward more details about what our balance is and what it's projected to be over the next five years.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, go ahead, Councillor Garnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No question, just a comment. I'd just like to take the time to thank Mr. Hesek and staff for all the work they've put into providing this budget, and thank you for your presentation. I can imagine this is extremely trying and difficult, given the situation, everything going on. And your, your efforts are very much appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Keefe, for a second time?
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering, Mr. Hesek, if you can just, I need a bit more clarity on, on the, the revenue side of things. You talked about our revenues declining and the need to pick that up. So I understand revenues declined because of our investments had gone down and also as a result of the break that we, we gave to our, on business tax. Are there other revenue streams that were significantly impacted? I think I, I missed that or lost it in, in all the info that was provided.
In addition to the investment revenues, the only other revenue source where we've seen large decreases is in taxes, and that was a council decision last year to put in that one-time cut. And then following receipt of the safe restart funds to maintain taxes at last year's level for one additional year as a starting point. So it's really just those two.
Okay, okay.
The bulk, bulk of it is taxes.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hesek. I see no further requests for clarification from my colleagues. So I will thank you very much for your time. And seeing no other items on the agenda, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor? Okay, unanimous? Thank you.